I'd like to quote meeting order, please stand for the flag.
I would leave you to the flag. United States of America, each other's republic. Would you stand on that issue, no matter how indivisible it would be, just sprawl?
Well, good evening, everyone, thank you for coming, we're down with trustee and village clerk. Village clerk is at NICOM upstate learning more good stuff. So, but we have a forum and we're ready to go. First thing on our agenda is the Murches Bay project has a proposal for some thoughts. I assume at the marina, we have the board and if you see your material up to this point, it's fine, so.
It hasn't.
Yeah, everything's pretty much the same.
Okay.
Overcome the mechanical difficulties of the last time, we've just kept calling me off the chair.
Okay, good.
So, as you may be aware, we're growing to transplanting size, about one hundred and forty-five thousand oysters a year in this floating upriver system at the northeast corner of the marina. And before we can start, let me just, you know, thank you, the board and the community for the great support we've been getting for quite a while. So, this is an outgrowth of our success. So, one of the operational things that happens is that the oysters start out small and the barrels that we grow them in start out small. And then as the season progresses and the oysters grow, we need bigger barrels. So, we're constantly bringing barrels back and forth from where we store them to the site to install them. So, we're asking the board is to grant us a small area here, twenty-four feet by twenty-four feet, which being closed with a scot-free fence. So, we can keep the barrels on the site and avoid having to drive back and forth with the barrels from where we store them. That's pretty much it. We're looking to harvest the one hundred and twenty-five thousand oysters we raise this year in October.
The ones in West Hampton go tomorrow.
Tomorrow, these are going tomorrow? I thought my log was going tomorrow.
Yeah, so we're gonna start at nine o'clock in Guam, and then what time do we get to West Hampton?
Probably 'cause they're about eleven. If anybody's interested in coming, you can just give me your phone number and I'll call you when we're close.
Yeah, it's neat because that's really the only time that you get to see the oysters, because most of the time they're just hiding under the, you know, undercover in this floating system. But then, you know, we haul them all out, they're on the boat, there, we take a lot of pictures of them, it's the only time you really get to see them. Then they're often their permanent homes.
And not to boast, but we've been told that these are the most beautiful oysters that anybody has seen in the last thirty years, so.
Good, good, success.
Yeah, so that's what we're up to. It's been really successful, it's been a great partnership, and we really appreciate the village's operations.
So, we definitely support the effort, and it's environmentally sound and beneficial, so there's no question. The only concerns I had is that establishing a permanent storage kind of facility leading to other entities wanting the same consideration on village property. So, I don't know what the rest of the board's thoughts are on that. We do at this point allow dock boxes for the seasonal boaters. There are a few seasonal boaters that requested a dock box to be placed at the marina. And those are allowed to be placed near their slip, but not on the walkways, only in the grassy area, kind of a situation. But other than that, we don't currently have any storage type facilities available to the, to a slip user, I guess is the best way to put it. I don't know if the board has any objections or thoughts or.
I don't, I think it's a great cause, I don't think anyone's given notice there, honestly.
Is it, it's, it's not in the floodplain area, it won't flood that often?
Yeah, it's in the floodplain.
Well, it won't flood that often, let's put it that way.
They flood.
They flood.
They're built for it. And you know, you know, this is, you know, with water dependent use, and I knew the county just passed the whole working waterfront set of regulations.
Right.
This kind of plays into that, you know, we're working the waterfront, it's like any old place.
Karen, well, anything we store there that could rust or some more, is it just?
It's all plastic. It's all plastic drums.
For the winter?
Likely for the winter, but I'm just.
We'd like to do it year-round if possible.
Yeah. It's just barrels in there.
Barrels.
Because that, that area really does not cover anything over there, so.
Oh, yeah, there's nothing of real value.
No.
Okay. Can you guys be maintaining, like, fencing if something happens a little?
Right.
We know what's happening.
Very clean and, right, use repair the fence if there's any damage, that's what.
Maybe you wanted just stick a couple of sticks there, could I take them, gather down, invite down there, just.
Oh, where's that, make sure, yeah, we'll take it off.
Just to give it better, I mean, I'm looking at this, but still I wanted to see.
Yeah. The only other use for that particular area is trailer parking, it's designated for trailer parking. But there's generally, I don't see, the trailers tend to park in. And those out, so.
Again, we're definitely, we're gonna state. So, and send you some photos, so you can see where it is. Okay, life is better with.
We'll come back tomorrow, so. Come tomorrow, grab a little pack, because we can get a bunch of interest.
Okay. Mr. Angel, do you have any legal concerns at all? They are renting a seasonal slip from us, so they are seasonal.
You mean you own this, it's a sort of square side, you rent spaces, they're still residents. So, it's not like art and or anything, I think that you'd be able to, I mean, I'll take a look at it, but I don't, offhand, I can't think of any reason why it's illegal.
Okay, good.
Of course, we want a lease, we have a vast amount of rent.
I would say.
Okay, any other board questions? Okay, if we just stake it out, we'll take a look, and I don't, I don't see any big hurdles there. Thank you, okay, good. Okay, next topic is the village community, use of village property application, do we have a, oh, good, we have someone here? Good. This has been an annual event, it's been very successful.
It's the second time it's done.
Oh, I, well, it was, it morphed into something else, as it was something else earlier, correct?
This is the six year up in the beach.
That's, okay, good, and it's grown, is I guess is the best way to put it.
Yeah.
When I first saw the application, I was a little concerned because I didn't see any parking accommodations, but we have a subsequent, you see the subsequent.
We'll put the actual parking lot.
Yeah, and the allowance for the windmill area, so that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is, this is good, well, thank you.
So, this is basically how we started up last year. Of course, the windmill was enclosed in a fence, but we would just do the same now as we did last year, nobody's parking on the grass.
Fine, we would like the roped area, south of the roped areas generally parking for the events, and the events are in the northern portion of the great lawn, so that's basically.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we have, so that's good. Any board members have any questions? It seems to be a growing, very popular, well-done, well-organized.
So, this black line here is not the, the yellow fence, the double rope fence that goes across? It looks like there's park on the north side.
Yeah, this is the wooden fence that's here.
Okay.
People do park here and here, and then they go in the back, you keep this blocked off, you know, branch up here and some other stops.
I just saw the driveway there, because that driveway is usually locked, we just have all cars coming from the south side. And I think.
There's a driveway here somewhere?
There's two driv, yes, there's two driveways, and I think the mayor was stating, we don't usually have, the point of the fence was to keep the vehicles away from pedestrians. And that's why we have just all cars on the south side of it. I just saw this, I just wanted to clarify.
That's fine, I mean, we did this last year, we can, I mean, that's where the parking comes in, so people are gonna drive in.
There's, there's two.
There's two, it's the south side.
Close, close to the windmill is one, and that one's.
Sorry, you want that blocked off in the.
That one's gonna be blocked off, that's, and it's close to the windmill. Yeah, but that can stay open, so you can get all your vendors on to it, and there's any weapon and everything there.
Right, but you don't want anybody parked?
No, correct. That's, the vendors and things, sure, but when it comes to mixing event.
Okay, so people that are working at head port here, because they're just gonna keep the cars there.
Sure, yes.
Because they're gonna be there.
And then once everybody's in, then we can close it off.
We just don't want cars traveling in a mode, during the.
And then there are two openings on that, what you do?
There's three, actually.
Three.
So, we need to block all those ones.
Well, there's, currently, there's a gap in the rope, and it's wide enough for a vehicle to get through, which you have a portable, like, block.
Way back.
Okay, they put, so vehicle can't get through, but people can, so that's.
So, we don't have to worry about that, we're just gonna block this here.
Right, that one, we just shouldn't have cars doing in and out during the event.
I agree.
That's what I mean, that, you know.
Same.
Pedestrians and cars during the event is not a good idea.
Yeah, we're also gonna block our entrance for the public here until twelve, because a lot of times we're still setting up, people trying to walk through the fair.
Okay.
We're gonna block it off, so you can just sign up and clean up, and you can't come in until twelve, just to make it safe for town.
Good, alcohol vendors?
Yes, we dropped off the forms.
Yes.
I didn't get them back, did you sign them?
Well, I have to have authorization from the board to do that, so.
I brought them again, because I know they were dropped off.
Let's see. So, you got.
So, we just have to.
We're gonna have, like, snow fencing bring the entire thing, which is.
Oh, yes, yes.
And you have security as well with SLM, just to ensure that people don't have an alcohol beverage in their, side of the, the perimeters of the event.
Yes, I can't wait to perimeter.
With, with the beverage, correct, okay. Other than that, I don't think there's a problem with it, correct?
How many are you expecting to share?
It's hard to say, it's like between four hundred, five hundred, you know, it's like in and out.
Window specific.
A good show.
Yeah. I mean, hopefully the weather's good.
Yeah, yes. And that's the other thing I noticed, you changed, last year, it was the same date as the.
Well, we always have this date, they got rained out, so they did the same date as us.
Oh, right.
Which was fine, I mean, it was just more people that really heard us.
Your rain date is on the following Monday, correct?
Our rain date is on the fourteen, uh, which is the Monday.
Right, one day after.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
All right.
I don't know if you have any other questions?
All good?
Good, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that was easy.
Can we get back, because we have to send that out to the help, the liquor, it's just the beer and the wine.
I'll send it, made it. Yeah, I'll sign it, okay.
I just need to send it to the vendors, they have to send it.
We'll have a resolution at the next meeting authorizing we decided and making retroactive, okay, okay.
What were the dates for?
What were the dates for?
On October twelfth, Sunday, and Monday is.
Thank you.
Usually there are some police there, I don't know if that's something you guys come down and.
Yeah, well, I think last year, it's gone consecutive with the, the Main Street festival, right, the winner? So, that's, yeah, but, I think the staffing's at a level that, that day where there's always gonna be probably a police officer around. We tried to make it also like.
Yeah, well, we're actually gonna have the Southampton Town Police, it's gonna be there with a air booth, so, kind of inclusive, everybody, non-profits are coming. Try to get the kids used to, you know. Talk to the policeman, talk to the fire.
Yeah, if you, if you want, we can even throw up a table as well.
Yeah, I mean, if you like.
Yeah, if the town police isn't gonna be there, we don't mind jumping in next to them, we're gonna booth up as well. We're saying, like, our ATV parked there, let the kids jump around on the ATV and everything.
So, do you need more, I think you have another ten by ten?
We have.
I think there's two in a month, some wine and some syrup.
Well, oh, this is for the wine. Got it. We usually don't have this many witnesses.
And we have a whole website, if anybody has questions, you can just go on the website, like, everything's really explained on there, but we're saying. Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay, appreciate it. Good luck with your event, it sounds, it's been successful in the past since we. Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Okay, the next thing is use of village property, the Halloween party, it's sponsored by the Chamber and in collaboration with the elementary school PTA. It's the annual event, has been issued in the past, any board members have questions or concerns? Okay, so we'll have a resolution for that. Again, next one, Joseph Piero, Rogers Beach, up to the fourth, Rob spoke to him, is, is there a representative? Are you just gonna talk to me and let it, it's, it's all good, though? Okay. Okay. All right, so they do want the bathrooms open, okay. All right, well, if you're gonna oversee it and take care of things, we got it.
We got it, I'll give it to you right now, I think the whole set. No problem.
Okay, I'm in the.
I'm in.
I'm in the application to use the bathrooms, okay?
What time is that at?
It's eleven thirty to two thirty, but Rob's gonna.
I just want to write them a account as well.
Okay. Next item is the chief has suggested that we have no parking on the east side of Beach Road from Main Street, all the way up to Howell. Especially because of the congestion during the farmer's market, special events in the summer. It currently is from Main Street to church.
Not up to church, it runs up to the exit for the condos.
Okay.
And that's where we're running into.
And that's where we're running into issues, right? So, just, I think we can have Brad make a simple code change, have a public hearing in our next meeting. And take that into consideration during the public hearing, I think going to Howell will be the easiest.
Yeah, they'll make it clear that one, just to bring up.
The west side's not an issue.
West side, no, as long, if they're all parking on one side, we're okay, it's when everyone starts to park on both sides, and running into, really turns into a one-lane road. But I'm just concerned with, you know, with trying to get emergency vehicles and everything through there, it's, you have people walking in the roadway, so at times, everyone's just gotta stop to try to clear that.
Right, and it's complex, and it's pretty good, I mean, it's pretty crazy, because people are walking like free of rest in that one lane. It's pretty much pandemonium, especially when you park on both sides.
Yeah.
People parallel parking.
Well, people do that a lot of the time. Yeah.
They have a lot of, they have a lot of kids there, traffic, so they, they don't let them know, they have a lot of. They give it to you, right?
For, for the parking space?
If we change the code.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, but maybe we should also discuss one church between, between mill and beach, also making one side an outroad, no parking as well. I know that probably, it'll probably be more efficient to have it on the south side, because sometimes the funeral home uses, parks people on the north side, the church there. Yes. And I understand, you know, it's not always a problem, and they're using it, but with the farmer's market, again, that's kind of pretty contested over there. I'm grateful we can get this done, at least on Beach Road up to Howell, but maybe also church, south side church. Doing it for that, you might as well do both, I would think. Any issues with that, Matt?
Any?
Any?
Sounds good, it's free to you.
Good, okay, so would you, church as well, no parking on the south side? Yeah.
Which is good, because the north side mostly more.
Yeah, there's no curb cuts or anything, right?
People wants there.
South side.
Yep. Okay, we can do both. And we need to notice a public hearing for that, of the October second meeting, we have time to do that.
Oh, you can do it through this coming up meeting?
Sure, might as well.
Do you have enough time? Will you get the notice in time?
I'll check with Denise when she gets back, yeah. Meeting's not till October second, that's two weeks out, next week, if we do it at the beginning of next week, we can have time.
A little less than two, it's two weeks from tomorrow, right?
Right.
Might be.
Oh, we might be short, okay, we'll do it as soon as we can, whichever the timeframe works. Okay. Go ahead. Anything else on that one, board? Nope, okay, next one, paid hourly parking, the chief has brought up this concept, we've talked about this in the past. Several times at various intervals when parking is raised, it's, we had parking issues especially in the season. So, the chief has been looking into it more and wanted to just give an, kind of an entered, we don't have to make any decisions tonight. It's something to think about, it has. This is, I guess, we're just trying to get a hold, this is something we want to pursue before I really start diving into the concept of it. You know, it's not something common for a lot of different municipalities on the east end, I know it's, it's in play in Sec Harbor, it's success there. My view of it is, you know, we've always talked about trying to utilize all the parking that we have. We have some parking lots that are totally underutilized, such as the one that's behind the firehouse. So, maybe we could use the paid parking aspect, maybe leave a parking lot that's free parking to try and get people to utilize the different areas that we have. The one in Maine, companies have used, is one called Park Mobile, it does work alongside fundamental business systems, which already works with our court for electronic ticketings, so it's compatible there. Really not getting too much into it, it's really no upfront cost here for the village. All hardware that we already use, the traffic control officers, they use handheld devices, Park Mobile software is compatible with that, I would have to purchase maybe one or two, but really doesn't look like it's too much upfront cost to us. And it's really configurable to what we want it to be, and for the seasons to be like a Sec Harbor, I think they run it from May fifteenth to October fifteenth. And then after that, they don't charge for parking. So, with it being configurable, they've designed different zones for, for, you know, the costs and everything associated with that, everything's done by an app. So, we don't have to have kiosks up around the village, which I thought was a plus. But again, just trying to get a poll here on this, is this the direction that we want to go, and then I can come back to you and get more information, maybe bring someone in to really discuss what it entails. Not, not doing it on the. They do it on the, yeah, they do it there at that gravel lot, they do it on the wharf, and then there's two other small parking lots that they, they use it on.
So, what lots are parking?
I'm thinking the south lot, north lot, Main Street, they don't use it, they just do the regular time parking, but if we're gonna expand the Main Street parking, like we're talking, like we're speaking about, you know, down past Beach, which rode over there on the east side. Maybe something, we, we integrate there as well. Again, it'll, it'll be these nights where, where the village is absolutely packed, which is a phenomenal thing, but then, you know, people drive around looking for parking. And then you go into the lot behind the firehouse, and there's no one there. So, if there's, and we tried to, that's what I'm raising, one public parking signs, you know, if people can come in, or even, you know, maybe we can encourage our, our employees that work in the village, who work for all different shops. Look, you wanna park for free, use that lot, let, let the, leave the other lots for people who wanna come into the village, those are our residents, these are our shops. So, maybe it's a way to kind of migrate the people around, and a way to better utilize the parking that we do have.
Employees should be walking down, making up the parking spots, since people coming in, they should be utilized and by, by another place.
Right, so if, you know, if all of a sudden it comes into a, where you have to pay for your parking spa, spot, you know, to be there for your shift, or the get out, whatever it may be, or just walk a few feet further and you park for free behind the firehouse. Maybe that's an option you're gonna take, open up those spots downtown for more purposes. Yeah.
Let me tell you, if you go to dinner some night, the table's six, takes more than an hour, you know what I mean, I don't care where you go, if it's, it's been at least an hour to two hours at that restaurant, you know?
You know, we have a great problem, and the problem is every year, we're getting more and more people to the village, which is great, but we really do, I think we need to really just kind of look at a concept of how we're gonna manage the parking. And maybe this is the way to go, but I really want some input from you folks before I start diving in. Again, it's not a commitment from here, it's just saying, yeah, maybe this is something where it should sit in, go ahead and look into it a little bit further.
We should look into it, you know, on the post, but I think the biggest thing is get all the shop owners, you know, whoever works here, walk away.
So, so you're trying there with all, you know, just your regular compliance, you know, with the following lines. So, when the farmer's market is in play, all those vendors that park, you need the mill road lot behind Chase Bank there.
Yeah, I know.
And I sent the letter out to the Chamber, which have distributed all the vendors, ask them, look, the farmer's market is a great addition to the village, we love it, however, we have a parking issue, they ask for the vendors to park up in that lot. No, not at all. So, maybe this is a way, again, to try and get people to use.
Yeah, and these are available, those vendors, people coming.
No, and then, you know, we, maybe we want to have the park, you know, get these parking regulations coming for outside rooms, because there'd be more spaces available than in the mill road lot. If the vendors weren't parking there, they'd park in the firehouse lot, so, maybe, again, if you listen.
I listened to that a lot of times.
Yeah.
Or maybe leave that lot free just for any employee that in the village, so that way it's still, keep them, you know, charged for lots, because if you, if you work in the village, you park there, probably.
Yeah.
So, really push them to go there and then.
I, I spoke to a gentleman from Park Mobile, just, you know, a brief conversation, and again, it seems like it's really customizable to what we want it to be.
And was there a shirer you like put in your, are you, so you go into your phone or something, go that app and put your license plate number in?
Right, yeah. The spaces have like, well, not even all the spaces. Only, you don't have.
Where do they even have?
Nobody has, the spots, we're gonna give you a number, you'll just have a little. Yeah. They, just in Charlotte, they had a lot of that, there's a zone number. Exactly what it is, it's scanning.
It's a, it's a great equalizer, you know, it's in the same place, all right, you could park there all day, if you're gonna be seeing that meter all day. You know, and it encourages people that are there for a short time to come in, do their shopping, and like, leave, so they're in a storage parking lot, where they just stop there and they wander off, and they're six or eight hours later, and hopefully they. And hopefully they can get, they'll be each of their friends. Right, it it takes the burden off of the traffic cops having to find these people doing contractions and forcing the people to kind of, you know, prove that they're supposed to be.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be, obviously not money to adjust the rates.
Right, you know, so.
Those report yet, they do free parking for the months of November, December, and January, just to encourage shopping, because it's off-season, it's not really very crowded, so they just turn the meters off.
Yeah, season, right. Yeah, we're not doing anything that a lot of other places aren't, so.
And with those apps, there doesn't require much infrastructure, because the old system is used to require a standing meter, some people complain that they don't have to use their phones, most people have adapted to now to realize that's the way the world's going. But the kiosks, not, yeah, with these newer systems, everything's done through an app.
They have pretty good wifi on Main Street, right? We have to, have to psych calling. Right. We could bring Rod into the conversation soon. He's done all the parking studies, he's, that's his job size.
Business for forty, fifty years.
I've already asked Rod about the Main Street, the parking, all that kind of stuff for meetings, so I'll reach out to him, let him know we're thinking about this as well. Anything else on that? Okay. Next thing is GPW, we have two candidates that would like to go to a conference, it's eighty-five dollars per person. And it's local, so it's a nominal expense, I think it's worthwhile for the for the two.
They've kind of this in the past, just like, it's next phase of something.
So I don't have any issues with it, as a matter of fact, I think it's a good thing, so.
I hope so, at least now.
Any other comments besides Rob? So we'll get with that, so we'll have a resolution for that next meeting. Okay. The chief, on the other hand, is going on, suggesting training for, I don't know, it's going all over the place, up all the way up to Westchester, I believe, right?
Yeah, this is Westchester. What, I was supposed to be at Albany, at least past two nights.
Right.
And I I I moved out with a sign so I could go to this training, this is similar to, a little bit similar to a training I did last year. This is six days, six days over three months, so it's not out of here for a full week. We get a leadership development, something I think is important, also trying to get Kevin, Sergeant Kotel, to attend the conference as well because. We're only as good as our training in some cases, so. Two nights in September, two nights in October, two nights in November, up in Westchester. No registration fee, so we all just pay in for lodging, sponsored by Department of Criminal Justice Services.
I think it's a good idea as well, any board member questions? Alright, so we'll have a resolution for that in the next meeting as well. Now the chief once again is asking for. This is me, you want to add to?
So I'll have the. So this would be an upgrade to our training room, this is for teleconferencing, a lot of the trainings, training. Opportunities are kind of moving to to web-based, especially with a lot of Steve Dope's five D W I programs that are coming in out of Albany. A lot of them are two or three hour webinars, and what this will be, it's gonna be a seventy-five inch TV with computer and everything hooked up to it, camera, nivulants to speak back to it. So the office is gonna be a case in training, so how do you send them away? We keep it locally, bring them in, tell halfway during the tour, okay, so I'm onto this webinar for a couple hours. A little bit more comfortable down there, otherwise what they're doing now is they're, I have one locked into a computer there, the other ones in an office over here locked into a computer. Just way to roll in the same s- same space, able to, you know, have a conversation about what's going on and interact with the program a little more efficiently from there. Also, it will enable us to have a room for, stuff again, uh, also emergency management's kind of moved to something called the Web E O C. Uh, Web Emergency Operations Center. And typically, if there was a large, uh, major event, such as a hurricane or something like that, what you want to do is you want to put something in the A O C operations center up in the app. This way we have the person there that we can, you know, call, hey, this is what we need because we have resources. What this does is it enables us to log in and do water at E O C Operations Center without having to dedicate somebody over to there. Also, if you needed to talk to, maybe that, you know, the cameras, we could all gather in the room and have that conferencing available to us. We're using Fluid Timber Tree Forest, they're already an I T vendor, really happy with the work that they do for us, I think Scott and his team will really do a great job with this together for us.
Right. Would you have questions, comments? Right, you're done.
Police comments usually generally are in the in the, uh, Emergency Operations Center.
I think it'd be better for the police to have the central role in that. Okay. Alright, good, so we'll put that on the resolution as well. Seventy-five inch TV, I don't know, I'm used to fifty-five being big, you know, I'm old school, so. But they don't close that much. Yep, okay. Next thing, we had a resident inquire about additional lighting at Stacy Drive, and then I approached Matt on this, and he said Stillwater's also. Might be need additional lighting, he was gonna look through. It would be the wooden post configuration with the light head. It's, there's some already in there, but just adding to what's there and getting the right locations established. So I was gonna ask Matt to survey the situation and come up with specific recommendations. As long as the board is in agreement with that, each each additional light.
Phenomenal expense, it's just, currently there is decorative lamps in there, some of them are out, we're waiting P S D to connect them. They're not considered emergency, they're not, you know, they're not required in their highway law to have streetlights, so it falls on a lower priority, and they have somebody in the area, they go and they fix it. I've seen lights for two, three years before they finally got somebody assigned to the same, but that's the way it is. So currently have two lights out there, I'm trying to get them over there to fix them.
What about solar lights?
Solar lights, so.
Major units with solar lights.
The elementary school did that. The problem is the batteries, so the elementary school did, the batteries, I think, were like forty-two hundred dollars a piece, which is way more than, you know, they only have lifespan of three to five years.
But also I think P S D might sponsor something, they have a program, I think, what we saw, of course.
The problem is the amount of soul that you would need to power that light would be way more intrusive than a one single light, I think it would ruin the characteristics of the area.
No lights in there for two, three years, they think that, but you know, just kind of.
For some points, well, they're flooded, so those those areas, all those areas are flooded, yeah, they get corroded underneath, you know, it just, it happens, you know, animals bite through it or something like that.
That's underground utilities in a lot of areas. In Stillwaters, because.
Any overhead utilities, we just use the cover heads, everything, every technical lamp around is underground. I just, the only reason I mention this is usually, this is the time of year when everybody makes a place, because none of the streetlights, something's out, shit in, whatever it might be, because. Something's just a lot earlier now, and people paying attention to it. The only problem is there are other areas in the village here that would also probably qualify, you know, you want to, like, I don't know how far you guys want to go on. How deep you want to get into.
Yes, if you come up with like a number of certain areas that need it, maybe we could phase it in and we can talk about it more when you're going on, yeah.
Yeah, they will, so actually. New York Power authority will come out and.
Then come out and say, this is this what we need.
Right.
They might have a product that can see what we need and bring up the need, and of course the expensive, financial stuff like that, you know, so.
Yeah, I'll read that.
But you don't need a big white light, you just need a light, just light at the area.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to alarm the residents and have it be too bright.
Exactly, if you just something, just lighten up a little bit.
Yes. Yeah, exactly. Anything else, are you here for a specific reason or just listening, or?
Moved the area, so figured I'd sit there.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. Okay. The chief wanted to bring up an item that's not on the agenda, and while he's on a roll.
Uh, so every year it's a budget item, it's a new patrol car, it's just to kind of keep the fleet operational. Now, originally what I was gonna come up to do is come up here and ask for the car, the upfitting, the radio, everything that goes along with it. And that was gonna be about seventy-eight thousand dollars. But what I'm looking at now is decommissioning a car that's got about a hundred thousand miles and possibly being able to reuse a lot of equipment out of that into a new car. So I'm not gonna ask for that tonight, what I'm asking for is just to purchase the car at forty-six thousand six fifty-three to get that in. And then we're gonna have the vendor make sure that the equipment that is in the, the, in unit one thirty-seven can be switched out. So we might be able to just bring the upfitting down from about twenty-two thousand, I'm hoping, to probably get that down to about nine thousand. And if I do decommission one thirty-seven, it's gonna want, have one of the new radios in it, the dual band radio, so that'll save seven thousand if I can bring that over. But I'm not gonna know that until I get further down the road, but I just want to at least get the car on order so we can get that in. So this would be, I'm just asking for the, just to purchase the car right now at forty-six six fifty-three twenty-five, this is a two twenty-five for the police sector. Mobile drive, also the Westchester.
I'm not saying.
Uh, if we're gonna be using the equipment, there's no lead time in ordering that, all depends on the vendor, but give it, uh, I T S has been really good to us. So it could be a couple weeks.
What happens to the other car?
Uh, thirty-one thirty-seven, then it's got a hundred and three thousand miles on it, we kind of, we'll move that out to decom. I already have a, I wanted to hold it, it's a separate Torres up there, that's kind of the auction off. We have a Jeep that we all take possession from, from an impound yard that's gonna go out. We're going one thirty-seven when we move there. I'm also looking, I'm not gonna do in this meeting, a new admin car, and then what I would do is I would take the, what's that, is that a twenty-eleven Tahoe?
Twenty-three.
The twenty thirteen Tahoe that's that's there, we'll put that out, decom, at the auction. And with those four cars, we should be able to take in a decent amount of money because we make pretty, pretty good return. We 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 were using. We use, we use, we were using gun deals, there is another company that, they work at Nikon, and I had a brief discussion with them, so. They seem to be used pretty much across the country, I think, internationally. So we'll, I'll get together with Matt, we'll look it over and see what the best option is. But instead of really, sometimes we get these cars and we just run them all the way down to the ground, maybe it's something to think about. Trying to a little bit sooner where we can get a little bit of residual value on it. So.
Placing you before you said the right words.
Fine, what? Well, even for the admin cars, like if I was gonna get a new admin car, you're roughly near your sixty thousand, totally equipped. The Tahoe, just to get it in the door, sixty-one thousand, now they need the upfitting, so they're really not even in the same. Area that I want to be in. But again, this is tonight, I was just asking just to get the car in, just so we can see if it's all gonna work out as a retrofit.
I I'm talking on that phone right here.
You're getting one of the demos.
I like the way you said. Okay, I'll put a resolution on that. Yes, okay, the floor donation that's gonna pass. Hello. Okay. Alright, we do have an executive session on the agenda, anyone else have anything else to bring up at the meeting?
Steve, how many, how many officers are on duty at a time?
In value.
I've never seen so many police before.
Right.
Just go hire a lot. Yeah, really get to see the presence, it's a lot of.
Presence is much more than. Right. Was that a part?
Nobody's above the law.
Well, we do, we've done a couple different things, we were able to bring this staffing up, which is phenomenal, obviously that's supported everyone on the way. But I've also seen some schedule changes there, do some personnel rep, personnel rep, make sure that there's officers that are on duty. Scheduled every day from three to six, there's another officer out there that can be doing investigations or supplementing patrol. And then we also, our T C O who generally is C N O, the C N O thing, right, page fifteen, this is number fifteen. We, the village clerk worked with civil therapist, got a traffic control specialist position, which is part-time traffic enforcement. So we kept three of them on, so we're, use them during the weekend. If we have one of our crossing guards leaves off, they can slide over, we don't have a police officer sitting there, we can have a traffic control, a traffic control specialist sitting there. And also for our special events, it's gonna help us keep down the cost from like, you know, the run that's coming up on Saturday. One of the things to help augment the cost of that was using traffic control specialists. So we we're trying to move things around, yet I haven't had an omnipresence, it's a great thing, but the officers do a great work out there, so I'm really happy. E-bikes.
I, Kim wasn't gonna be here, I wasn't sure if we had a full contingent, so I, next work session, the e-bikes are on that.
I think.
Bikes and e-bikes, yes, we'll be on that next work session, so we didn't, we didn't forget it.
But officers, I have a staff meeting on October sixth, this is something I'm going to, you know, integrate into that, is the enforcement of the e-bikes, and even today. I was sitting in the office and upon the camera, there's two kids, and they're pushing an e-bike into one of the chamber bathrooms, so I had the cops go down there. Yeah, that e-bike is on the way home for the parents, I believe, right now, so if they see it, it's out there, hopefully, you know, a lot of cars. And I.
Which is last night, there was a kid riding an e-bike, riding wheelie. The traffic, the traffic light down, passing cars, in between cars, a month of power, I'm just saying it wasn't a whole deal, but it was over there, I said, these kids are gonna be.
They're everywhere, they are, no, I see them in front of my eyes.
That solves the problem.
I know, you know, that's crazy. There's no respect.
And it's, it's those bikes that aren't even supposed to be on the road, they're all electric ones, they're totally illegal, they're not supposed to be on the roadways, any shape or form. And I even skip up my house, they're with them by my house at forty miles an hour, no helmets on, thirty miles out, someone's gonna get hurt. Yeah, I, I think you're right, it's our job to try and make sure that doesn't happen, but we all working on it.
Another one, the last question, what's the new guy, what's the guy's name?
Uh, it's Mr. Ray, yep, he came in, uh, what, we, just try and hire somebody as a crossing guard, you have to then get them training. I like to hire someone that's always a fire department, fire police, and here's where he comes from, they have all the training, all the traffic control, everything's, they already have the physicals for the fire department. So, uh, he's a new addition, and he seems to be working at. Yeah. Yep.
All right, anything else? Okay, uh, I'm turning to executive session, I have a motion to go into the session.